Good luck.
Now it's time to deliberate amongst any public comment. Please step up the podium. Yeah.
Lily and Truth. So, yeah, I kind of wasn't entirely ready, but I think, you know, obviously, all three candidates are qualified in their unique ways. I think it boils down to kind of a tough contest between Tim and Brenda. And I think they're both well-qualified, but I do think it is vital that the board has a member that has a child in the district, you know, that really has skin in the game, as they say, or has, you know, a very serious stake in the success of the district. So that really makes me favor Tim more than Brenda, although I know Brenda has a tremendous amount of knowledge about the district and is dedicated to the district. I also think Tim is sort of a new, younger face and mind for the board. He's an attorney, which I think is helpful, and I really like the fact that he has experience in communications. So I've done a lot of observing of how boards and city councils and bodies operate in Emeryville, and I find that so many issues could be easily solved if people were better at communicating. And I think that the district definitely has an image problem, and I think that Tim really could use some of his experience and expertise in promoting the district. I like the idea of possibly changing the name, but that way of thinking, whether the name is changed or not, I think someone who is thinking about what is going to attract more students and families to the district is really important. So I really urge you to strongly consider Tim as someone -- oh, and one other comment. This idea that somehow it's an issue if Tim is on the Board of Education and his wife sits on the City Council. I mean, I don't -- I'm not sure what that comment meant or what the issue would be, but I don't see it. And I also think the board should look at that and really decide if that's something that's a liability. I just don't -- in fact, I kind of see it as a positive. So -- and Diane has given tremendous service to the city, and I think Tim would do the same for the school district. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, board members, superintendent Rubio, student representatives. I come to you this evening just to bring more awareness to the situation as you all have interviewed these three candidates, two of which who have been previously passed on because they did not qualify in the proper rounds for the first time that they were interviewed. That just allowing you to kind of get a keen understanding that if they were not adequate for their first round, and there was not much change in vocabulary or their nature, to try to lean into this Emory Unified School District and contribute effectively. I feel as though somebody who has that inquisitive nature and that keen understanding of what these students actually have in favor and what they are presented in a classroom on a daily basis, as well as what the school district goes through, would allow the Emory Unified School District School Board to thrive successfully. Just allowing the understanding that Brenda Collins does have what it takes to represent this school board efficiently and effectively, and allow you to kind of have that diversity that you would like to also incorporate within our Emory Unified School District, knowing that we already have the lawyer profession that Ms. Lengner also provides with her new position as a board member, as well as your expertise in communications, Ms. Inch. So I just want to present those ideas to you as you have such a collaborative board. Right now, an intricate piece is missing, and that piece is Brenda Collins. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Audrey Miles. I am a T K teacher at Anne H. Elementary. And listening to all of the speakers tonight, my key thought was, as a teacher at this district for over 14 years, very much appreciating two of my students that I had in K, 1, and 6th grade, and my drama students, that the important issue here is that we have someone who is dedicated to the students, who has a relationship with the -- a strong relationship with the school community, who has a very diverse relationship with both teachers, students, and administration. If I was listening to all three candidates, they all seem to be qualified, but when I'm -- what I look for, when I'm looking for someone that is going to represent both teachers, students, and parents, who has a voice that may vary from some voices that are currently on the board, but someone who is able to listen, who are able to work together. In the past, we've had boards that were very contentious. I've sat through many of these board members' meetings where people were arguing and having disagreements and not being able to communicate and be respectful to each other. And so if I look at that, and I'm thinking of people that I have worked with who have brought about a sense of community and a sense of value to all of us, both as teachers and students, that would be Brenda, in very working hard fundraising, everything from our crab feed, everything from the student functions, taking kids, raising money. She has a very dedicated spirit, and I think that she will bring some strong diversity to the board and a new voice that will help you to work together as a team and to bring us into this next era that we're coming into, which is this community schools model. I think she will work through that smoothly and effectively, and she has that voice with teachers and the students to bring all of us together on all those varying levels. And so I think that we should consider that strongly.
Thank you very much.
The board, I think, needs to decide what is most important to you. I think you have two candidates who are very different, Ms. Collins and Mr. Byron, and you need to decide. You have a candidate who is very dedicated, has a lot of familiarity with the school, has a lot of experience in the schools. And on the other hand, you have someone with a lot of skills, a lot of ideas. I was really impressed with Mr. Byron's ideas and his commitment to working as a team member on the board. So this kind of rests with you, what is most important to you. But please, I'm very concerned about this idea of the invalidity of someone who is in a couple with another person with a position in the city. I think it's very disrespectful to the individuals involved to feel that somehow there's going to be collusion, or I don't understand it. It's disrespectful to the member we have on the board right now, and I'd urge you not to consider this idea, which is, I believe, bogus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So I also liked the comments of the first speaker and of Ms. Collins. That what I think is lacking in our local and national society right now is the respect for the backbone and the wisdom and the work of particularly women of color. And when I look at the need for social and emotional development in my students, it's that place that I want to begin, and from there strengthen their self-respect, their understanding of the power and equality that's possible for both girls and boys, and of children of all ethnicities and backgrounds and economic standing. I know that's borderline saying there's a kind of person I would think would be better for the board, but what I really see is community commitment and experience. You're new, and you're wonderful, and you're very diverse, and two of my favorite students are among you, also new and wonderful, and very open and diverse and dedicated to equality and dedicated to vision. But I think we need a little bit of grounding and experience here at the table, and I think Ms. Collins would bring that. I also think that -- I've forgotten the same -- is Mr. Byron was the first one? Has some wonderful ideas, and I would like to encourage his involvement. If he were not to be selected for the board, I think he'd be a fantastic, sorry, marketing consultant, and I think that that could do a lot towards affecting the, what we call, branding or the spirit of the district. So those are my comments. Thanks for doing your good work.
Thank you.
Bill Reuter, longtime resident of the city of Emeryville. Among other things, for my sins, I'm the chair of the Budget Advisory Committee for the city and therefore an ardent defender of the general fund. I'm not going to be much help to you for making your decision. You have two very strong candidates. I like them both very much. I'm impressed by what each brings to the table, and I don't envy you having to decide between them. They are the first two people who spoke to you this evening, and I wish you good luck at making your choice.
Any other comments? If not, shall we open up to an open forum amongst our members here? Anybody want to start off?
I'll start off. I agree that all the candidates have a lot of strengths and could each bring something unique to the table. I would say what's most important to me is the recognition that Emeryville's better days are in front of us and that this is a school that we will do everything in our power to make work in its current form. So on that note, I was a little worried by Mr. Byron's sort of -- he wouldn't commit to the idea that Emory Unified should go forward as a K-12 institution. That was -- that's one thing that sort of bothered me.
Go ahead. I would like to say, as a parent who chose not to put my child in this district, I would like to see a parent on the board that has a child that goes here. I think it's very important to have somebody that has the day-to-day comings and goings and is familiar. And former president of the school board, I felt, did have a child in the district, and I did respect him for that. It is a way of putting your money where your mouth is and showing that you are truly invested and have no other motivation but to make this school better.
Just words. Not to defer to you.
What I was looking for in a candidate were four general attributes. One was a cultural fit, meaning what I see myself and the rest of our fellow board members working with this individual continuously and for long hours and then making long and tough decisions around the future of our children. Honestly, I think I saw attributes in all three candidates, in all three. The other things that I'm looking for personally in a candidate are complementary skills, complementary skill sets to that of the current board. In that sense, I feel that two of the candidates, the skill set would not be complementary to what we currently have today. One of the other things, a third of four things that I'm looking at for in a candidate is their preparedness as a show of commitment and interest in this position and the importance of this board position. Going in the rotation in which the interviews took place, one of the things that caught my eye was that Mr. Byron seemed to have presented us with the same answers that he presented in December. I would have hoped -- my general hope was that there should have been at least some improvement to that and some fine tuning to those answers. They seem -- I was here, so that's why I can -- I was not a board member, but I was here in the audience, and I definitely -- I could almost unfortunately recite the answers based on that. So that let me get a little bit uneasy. With Ms. Collins, I thought she was prepared, she showed preparedness for the answers as well. And with Mr. Van Geffen, I saw an interesting improvement from the previous -- from a personal perspective, a significant improvement in the preparedness of his answers. Again, I recall being here for when he was interviewed, and I felt that this time around, he was very well-prepared. He was able to quote and notice the improvements in enrollment, which I thought, again, showed his preparedness for this particular time around, as well as having noted that he had watched the previous videos. So that, to me, shows some signs of commitment to the school board as well. The last point, just to not hog the microphone for such a long time, is a shared vision. The fourth thing that I'm looking for in a board member is somebody that shares the vision that I share with and the reason why I chose to run, and that is to protect the integrity of the Emeryville School District. And I think only two of those, of the three candidates today showed that definitively, and one of the candidates raised to your point earlier. I think one of the candidates certainly left me thinking about whether they would protect the integrity of the Emory School District.
This is the, I think, the third time I've seen these questions, and to great degree that are pretty much the same degree -- I'm sorry. This is the third time I've seen these questions, and it's interesting how people approach their answers. This time around, they were all the two or the three that had previously interviewed were better prepared, and that's a plus on any endeavor. Looking at kind of the specifics, and I do want to thank all of them for their efforts and their presentation as well. Out of the, you know, seeing them, two of the three, again...
Actually, Brittany didn't interview last time.
Well, two of the three had interviewed before.
Two of the three, yeah.
Yeah. With that being said, the -- what really struck me as the first candidate, Mr. Byron, is still the hesitancy to commit to the district as a K-12 Emeryville school. You can dance around the idea that maybe there's options out there, but I don't think as a representative of the people of Emeryville, students, the parents, and just people who live here as far as residents as well, should -- that should be not even a question to be raised. It seems that we have an entity, and I know marketing is one way to combat it, and when I heard to change the name of the school, there's a history. And when you start messing with history, it makes things convoluted, is that where do you stand? You have a presence. And you've got to love our history because it's very colorful, and it is a wonder that we are where we are today with that. But it has been a very positive, especially you can see the progression. If you cut off that history, you're not grounded. And when just an idea thrown out there as to rename the district or the school, that hurts. And because of that, I would never want to see Emeryville struck that way. So that is a big negative when it comes to, you know, choosing a candidate. On the other hand, we have Ms. Collins. She's been a, I'm not saying institution with the district, but she has institutional knowledge, and that helps a lot to understand kind of the inner workings. But we are moving in, maybe in a little bit different direction than when she was here. So it's an issue that may be able to be resolved, but it is that she is a good resource, and that helps, you know, make us feel grounded. And then you have the ability to move forward from that situation. And as far as the third, Mr. Van Geffen, better prepared this time. With that in mind, he did answer some interesting -- answer the questions kind of interesting, a little bit better than the last time, which gave me a little bit more comfort as far as considering him. As far as the idea of him being a lawyer, that's vocation or a likelihood that we have at least one on the board, so that would be two, but it doesn't preclude him from being considered. So it's still very much up in the air or still for deliberations as far as the choice, but that's where we stand. And I want to have the two student reps chime in. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's fine. Well, from like the first two candidates, mostly the second one was the person who I connected with. I would like to see somebody that I can connect with and see myself in. So as a person of color, like I would totally -- and as a woman, I would like to have that support and that connection. And as a student, it's been very important for me and my friend to be very involved in our school, in our community, and to have that person that we already know, we've grown up with, the entire school basically knows Ms. Brenda. And she has the skills necessary to be on the board, and just a commitment to the school district and this community has been very strong. So I definitely would support her and, yeah. I thought all three candidates were really strong, but same as Kimberly, I think second candidate, Ms. Brenda, was the best choice because, building off of whatever Kimberly said, there was the most connection with her. And while she was here at our school, it was, she was probably the person that helped us the most with almost everything. Watching her go actually hurt. It like changed a lot of things, and we had to get used to it, but watching her come back would be really nice, and I would totally support her.
May I?
Okay. One, I want to reiterate what a number of you have said tonight, that I think all three candidates really offer very unique skills and compliments to the district, so I think it's great. I appreciate the board asking my opinion. You're voting on this, not me, but you have asked me my opinion every time we've done this, so I appreciate it. I share some of the concern already voiced regarding Mr. Byron. He said almost the same thing. We shouldn't be committed to a specific forum of the district, but I'm committed to public education existing in Emeryville. That's a pretty vague response. It worries me. We're doing great as a district right now. We're improving and improving. So to hear that still concerns me, and I don't want to beat around the bush. There is a small contingency in Emeryville who wants to see the dissolution or the merging of the district. And I think that people's connections and interconnections may not be apparent in interviews, and people may not be -- I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the last part.
Oh, I'm sorry. People, I'm not sure where I left off. People have different connections and interconnections that may not be apparent in the interview process, and I'm not certain that Mr. Byron's real view on the potential changing of the district or dissolution is quite clear to me. And Ms. Collins, I think, has a lot to offer. I think it's great that she -- that we could have a female of color on the board. I think that's something we have, that the board has to consider. My concern with the first two candidates is that they have lots of connections. Some of them are not positive, potentially, historically with the district. And the third candidate, I don't think is connected to any of us. So that's actually a positive to me, to be honest with you. And he -- and what distinguished Mr. Van Geffen for me was that he actually said, "I'm 100% against the district changing and being merged or disillusioned or whatever the potential plan out there is." So -- and he's the only candidate who broke down all four goals and spoke to them, so he ran out of time. So in my mind, the board, I think the board needs to consider we might be better off, or the board might be better off, having someone who doesn't have all these connections with us and who was clear on their commitment regarding the future of the district right now.
Can I point something out? That this question, this last question about the form of the district, came out around the time that I was elected, and that there was another candidate named Ken Bukowski that was the one that was talking about just mergers and merging with districts and talking about that type of stuff. And I think it's kind of a straw man that people are throwing out there. I really, unless we go bankrupt, unless there's something really earth-shattering, I really don't see why there's this great fear that people are going to move earth and wind and fire to change the district and have people in Berkeley and in Emeryville, you know, join. It just, it seems like people are bringing that up, and it's got added at a point where that was kind of somebody's campaign.
Well, I can just share with the board that there was a council member who is no longer on council, who did have meetings in the community, who did approach the County Office of Education, and the Berkeley Superintendent called me last year, and he was approached, as was a county-level superintendent on the county board for Alameda County. So it's a bit more than a straw man, and a number of people in the community have approached me and have approached, I think, some of our board members in the past, that this is a real conversation out there. So for me, it's a real issue.
Yes, because your job would go away.
Well, that's that -- well, all of our job, all the teachers as well, all the teachers, not just my -- I can get a job wherever I want it, but the teachers would lose their jobs, they'd have to reapply. That's true. It's not just my job.
I'm just...
It's up to the board. Yes, go ahead. Well, I would suggest the board finish its deliberation. I think we're still on our deliberations. I know you're going to be commenting on our deliberation.
And that's going to get messy.
I'd just hold. I don't want to go into that. I'm sorry.
Will there be another -- will there be another opportunity for comments?
Well, I think, because we're, right now, we're deliberating, and once we get to a point where we're ready to vote, then we can have a final statement regarding that, and then we'll allow for a -- to the public.
I think it unfortunately has to do with the timing more than us not wanting to hear your perspective, right?
So if that's the case, each of us have said what we have, our first impression and, you know, an idea of where we stand with each candidate. Shall we... Shall we put it to a vote to get a consensus, or...
Yeah, I think the last time you asked each member what their rankings were, I don't know if you wanted to do the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Or do you want to do your top...
Do you want to do, well, I mean, do you want to tally or I can tally it? Okay. Shall we just go down the line, or...
I'm still thinking, hold on, I'm not quite ready yet, so if someone else wants to go.
You're going to start with the end.
Okay. And so you just say their, like, name, or...
I just, if you want to, just give a one, two, three ranking, if we have three, however many you want to, or if you just want to do one.
Okay. I think for, like, the first option should be Ms. Brenda Collins, and then the second option, Timothy Byron.
You might want to speak into the microphone.
The first option as Ms. Brenda Collins, and the second option as Timothy Byron. Also, the first option as Brenda Collins, and second option Timothy Byron.
First option Byron, second option Brenda.
First option would be Van Giffen, and second would be Collins. It would be, first option would be Van Giffen, and the second would be Collins.
I am between Ms. Collins and Mr. Van Giffen, mainly because of your shared vision in protecting the Emeryville School District.
Do you want to restate that?
Yeah, absolutely. So my perspective is that I'm very much torn between Ms. Collins and Mr. Van Giffen. That would be the one and two, mainly because both of them expressed clearly that they would protect, and they share the vision of protecting the Emeryville School District in its current form. So I am leaning towards, it's very close, I don't know, Van Giffen first, Ms. Collins second, but I could see it go either way.
My first choice is Ms. Collins, and my second choice is Mr. Van Giffen.
Other comment?
Yeah. Okay, I'm really, I'm so disappointed and disturbed, quite honestly.
I'm sorry?
Not because you're choosing Brenda Collins, which I'm assuming is what you're going to decide, I think Brenda's, you know, eminently qualified, I know her relatively well, she ran for city council, my community organizing group, ROLL, supported her. But I just, I think that what Barbara said is correct, that you threw in question number nine, and that that basically is what it is boiling down to in terms of how you're voting. I mean, it's clearly an important question, and you are basically saying you don't want to support Tim because you're afraid that he is going to support this merging with the Berkeley School District. And it's like everything else just goes right out the window. And so I do think that that question was sort of a plant, I think you were gauging who of the three candidates was supporting or opposing that. You got the answer you wanted from Brenda and from Mr. Van Giffen, and so it's just so disappointing, because I think really the issue is who is the most qualified to sit on the board. I think it is a tough call between Brenda and Tim Byron, but I do think that he brings things, particularly the fact that he has a child in the district. It is so important that there is someone on the board with children in the district, so that they have a real stake in the success of the district. And I respect that Tim says, you know, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea to merge, it's all about what is best for the students in the district. So I just hope that that's what the board is thinking about. You know, it's not political, but in fact, it is about the well-being and the education of the students who are enrolled in the district. Thank you.
So I'll just restate for you right now, you have, of the board members, and I'll go over the student votes, you have one board member voting for Mr. Byron first, you have two board members voting for Mr. Van Giffen first, and one board member voting for Ms. Collins first, and then you have two students voting for Ms. Collins first.
What is that added?
So, no, it doesn't... And I don't know what further deliberation you can have to help you decide, but I can, you know, that's something to consider at this point.
Well, we've been deadlocked before.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And we do have a reserve for another board meeting, correct?
You do have the option to give this more time for another, you have two options, really. You have one option of giving this more time to the next board meeting, and your other option is, which is something I gave some thought and I checked with legal today, you have the option as well, I have the option, I guess I should say, to also bring you any other potential candidates, if we can find any, between now and that meeting, and then you have the option to continue and only look at these three candidates, or if you feel like it's necessary, you won't be able to vote on that tonight, but you have the option to open this up for a very brief time, one more time to receive additional candidates. So your two options are, you have three options, make a decision tonight, wait until the next board meeting, give it more thought and deliberation, wait until the next board meeting, give it more thought and deliberation, and in that meeting, I may, if I can, if there's any other candidates that are out there, I will bring them to your attention, but you don't have to do anything with them.
I disapprove of bringing additional candidates in, I think we have good options here, and the three candidates, I don't think bringing in additional candidates would be fair to the people that applied on time and who are well-qualified for the role.
And you shouldn't decide on that now, you shouldn't even have conver, just so you know, I appreciate the opinion, but it's not on the agenda, so it would be not a good process.
Will this go to an election? I mean, is there a deadline where we have to have somebody?
If the board doesn't make a decision by the date of Friday, February the 4th, then yes, it would.
Friday the 4th?
Friday the 4th.
So what I would recommend is that we try to narrow the pool to two candidates, and see if, once that happens, and see if we can make a decision.
Dr. Rubio, when you take into consideration the rankings, when you take into consideration the rankings, is there one candidate that is, I'm not sure how exactly we would do this, but it's sort of the first or second choice of the board members?
Among the board members, you have two votes for Mr. Van Giffen, and only one vote for Byron and Collins, for first. And then the two students also, however, said Collins and Collins.
So, but if you look at the second-ranked vote...
Oh, sorry. Among the second choices, I'm sorry, it'll take me just one second.
Three for Ms. Collins, one for Mr. Van Giffen.
Three for Collins, I'm actually not seeing that, one second, I'm sorry.
I was just...
Oh, Brenda, are you for the first name? I'm sorry, it's a first name, I'm sorry. Brenda looked like Byron for a second, I'm sorry, it's okay. So yes, three for Collins for second, and two for Byron.
One for Van Giffen as second.
One for Van Giffen for second.
None for Mr. Byron as second.
I'm sorry, say that again.
There were no votes for a second place for Mr. Byron.
No, the two students, the two students, no, I'm just, I'm just answering your question. Among the board, among the four board members, there were no votes for Byron for second. The two student members put Byron second.
I did my own tabulations as far as plus, minus, and a negative iske, and I came up with, my tally was, candidate two had a higher score than candidate one versus candidate three, so it was, in mine, it was two, three, one. Granted that I initially thought that Mr. Van Giffen would, would fit or serve the district well, I have some flexibility between Mr. Van Giffen and Ms. Rogers.
Ms. Collins.
Collins, I'm sorry.
As I expressed before, I have some flexibility there as well. What I, what I am seeing, though, is that it seems like if we were to narrow the pool, I think we would be with number two and number three, according to my...
Is that what your numbers coming up to, Dr. Rubio?
You could narrow the pool, that's your choice, yeah, it's, the board's decision, but if you want to narrow the pool to two and three...
Well, I mean, number-wise, initial vote-wise.
Just a second, I'm sorry. It depends on if you're, let me see here, two, well, yeah, for first place, excuse me, first, the first choice, excuse me, you have of the one, two, three, four, five, six of you, if we're looking at all six of you to my right, you have two for Van Giffen, three for Collins, and one for Byron. So if you wanted to narrow down from there, you would narrow down to Van Giffen and Collins. And then you would need to go from there.
I'm going to throw it out here, do you want to take another vote?
Depends on, do you want to have any more conversation between those two, before you're doing so, or it's up to you?
I'd still leave it open, because, just based on what we've heard so far from the public and amongst us, I think we can maybe get, make some headway. So I'd assume just put it out for another votes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the student reps?
I can go first this time.
Well, keep it...
Oh, either way.
Well, yeah, we'll mix it up, let's go this way.
And we're voting for one person?
Yes, let's do one more person.
Collins.
Collins.
Byron.
Collins.
On that account, we have a five to one.
You do?
Vote. Decision has been made, make it official. Is it a motion? Okay, do I have a motion for the selection of Ms. Collins for vacancy?
So moved.
I'll second it.
You want a roll call again?
Roll call, please.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, unanimous.
And I'll just add, I know that's hard, I know this is a hard process, so I appreciate everybody's thoughts, I do. Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them.
It's never easy, it seems. Every time we do this, this is difficult.